Good morning and welcome everybody to the Hardin County Commissioners Court Meeting. Today is February the sixth, Monday, February the sixth, it is nine AM and this is a special meeting. Main purpose of the meeting is a workshop to discuss the new purchasing policy. However, since we have three weeks between regular meetings, we do have a few items of business that we'll take care of. You'll all notice it's all Misty Sims items, so we're calling this the Misty Sims Agenda. All members of the court are present and the meeting is called to order. If anyone will please rise for the invocation. Dear Lord, I thank you for this day and thank you for this group of men and women that I'm proud to work with every day to serve the citizens of Hardin County. Please guide us in making the right decisions on behalf of the county and the citizens and its employees. Thank you for all of the men and women who served to make this country great at home and abroad and make it possible for us to all be free here in the United States of America. In this, in your name I ask, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, Misty Sims, purchasing agent. Permission to solicit bids for purchase of road and bridge materials and emulsions for all precincts. So moved?
Second.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Misty Sims, consider an authorized purchasing agent to advertise for requests for proposals to lease real property located at four two four four seven Highway one oh five in Batson and permission to appoint a committee to evaluate those proposals.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Misty, do you have any names to submit for that committee? Who served on the, well, we need three.
I think it's Kenstern.
Kenstern, alright, so we have Commissioner Pelt. And how about Erica?
Angela.
Do you have, is it okay for Erica to serve on that committee? Alright, and one more person. Judge Warner, would you mind serving on that committee since it's in your precinct? This is for somebody to rent the building next to the Senior Citizens Center. Alright, alright Judge Warner? Would you make that a part of your motion?
I will.
Second. That was already.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And thank y'all for agreeing to serve on the committee. Item number six, Misty Sims, discussion and possible action regarding recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning proposals received for the vendor to occupy and operate the courthouse cafe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Proposals were open on January twenty seventh, two thousand seventeen at two PM. Myself, Erica Singletary, Amanda Young, Pat Mitchell are present. Proposals were received at Bluebird Cafe and County Lunchbox Cafe. The evaluation committee, which was Commissioner Cooper, Kinder Walters, and Regina Bolton met on January thirty first and they're recommending the County Lunchbox Cafe.
Can you tell us a little bit about what their proposal included? Are they gonna, they're gonna be open five days a week during lunch?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And their venue is a lot like what the last vendor was, Miss Penny, I don't remember, I'm sorry the name of the cafe.
Yes, ma'am.
She did visit with her a lot and they've been very interested, I've visited with them several times, so.
Did they, did they show interest last time before Miss Penny and them? This is not the same one? Okay.
We'll award it to the County Lunchbox.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any, I'm sorry Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Misty and those who served on the committee, I want to thank you as well for your time. Item number seven is the workshop to discuss the new Hardin County Purchasing Policy Manual. And Erica, would you mind coming up? You and Angela have already talked about swapping places. We'll put that up on the screen and I just want to kind of give a little bit of history about the purchasing policy manual and why it's being updated or why a new one is being brought before the court for consideration. This is something that, best I can tell, it started sometime around two thousand twelve. Our former auditor and the former county judge and others worked together to, it's the very first one that says standby. All the way to the left. There you go. In order to meet what the local government code requires to make sure that all of our purchases are handled by the purchasing department. First thing that had to happen was to upgrade the software. I think the software that was being used at the time was acquired by the county sometime in the mid nineties and it would really not handle purchase requisitions. It would not, could not issue purchase orders through that and it could not be updated to make that happen. So a couple of years were spent to shop and get bids for software. And in two thousand fourteen, a decision was made to upgrade to our current software program, which is Net Data. And then quite a bit of work had to be done to get that up and running properly. Getting all of the old data moved over into the new software program. And so the auditing department, as well as the treasurer's office and the purchasing department and others all worked together really hard to get that data up to date. And it is now up to date and we need to move forward with our new purchasing policies. So that's kind of a little bit of history about how it's taken a little time. And I know that most of everybody in here came to a workshop, it's probably been a year and a half ago when this first started. And here we are again today, we feel like we have something that's pretty much ready. There might be a few items that need to be added that Misty's gonna talk to us about and some other changes to be made. I know people are a little apprehensive about a new purchasing program or new purchasing policy, you're looking at one of them. And we don't know exactly how everything's gonna work until we get started using it. And we know there's gonna be some bumps along the road, but we'll get those worked out and make sure that everybody is able to acquire the goods and services that you need to make sure that your department functions properly. So with all of that, I'm gonna turn this over to Misty, who's gonna kind of go through some important items regarding the purchasing policy and then we'll answer any questions that anybody may have and have some discussion that anybody may want to pick up regarding the policy. Misty?
So as he said, as Jeffrey said, we.
Yes, sir.
We implemented that Net Data financial software in two thousand fifteen. Before that, we used a paper requisition, it was a three-part, y'all have all seen these. One was for purchasing, one was for auditor and then we attached it to the invoice when it came in. We had a binder note book and this is how we kept track of purchase orders. And then we just created one in Excel. So we've come a long way with that part of it. The purchasing policy committee, which was Commissioner Kirkendall, Commissioner Cooper, and Debbie McWilliams and Angela Thor was formed in two thousand fifteen. And then we had some, we thought we would be able to use the Net Data system to enter requisitions, but it's not gonna be able to be used the way we thought it would be. There's any issues with that. One is it requires the user department to enter a vendor name and price. We sure won't know that until we get price quotes. So we're already doing that part of it, we're already entering them as a requisition. Also, a lot of our vendors have minimal, minimum amounts, dollar amounts that we have to order. So what we typically do is we take orders for about a week and then we combine that into one requisition with each line item on it so that we have enough to place the order. So we are developing a requisition form. It'll allow you to submit requisitions electronically. That's what it's gonna look like. You're gonna be able to attach information such as specifications, pictures, or notes. Once we receive your requisition, then we will give the price quotes and do what we normally do and then enter it into the Net Data system as a requisition. And when we do that, then the judge and auditor can actually do that before we can turn it into a purchase order.
Can I make one comment? I know you'll see on here it has a blank that says vendor. And so you may have a vendor that you want to use and you would put the name in there, but if purchasing finds the, whatever it is that you're trying to buy for a cheaper price, then they would be able to change that vendor. And like she said earlier, in the Net Data system, once you put a vendor in there and submit it, that vendor stays. And so that was one of the reasons that purchasing chose to use this program or this system here so that you can put that in. And where the vendor name is, you can leave it blank. Or you can put who you normally buy that item from. Again, if they find it cheaper somewhere else, they may buy that item or those items from a different vendor.
Sometimes you'll have quotes, some departments will go ahead and get a quote and that way you could attach it to there and it will help us because we have the actual, we need the item number, the part number, and a description of it.
So if, let's just say we had to get a set of new tires for one of the pickups. A lot of times we'll call, we get three quotes.
Yes, sir.
We'll just attach those.
Yes, sir. After speaking with a couple of the commissioners, there was some concern about things that happen that are unforeseen. You may have a flat tire, broken down piece of heavy equipment, or like I know Mr. Rockland tried to get mats because the ground was wet. So we're saying a purchase order is required for all purchases, the only exception being unforeseen circumstances that require immediate action. This is the part we're gonna be, one of the parts we're gonna be adding to the policy. In such cases, you would need to notify purchasing via phone or email before any county funds are committed. So, you know, if you have a flat tire out there, just call us and we'll make a note of it. If this happens after hours or on the weekends, you would notify us at the start of the next business day and submit a requisition with the vendor used and an explanation of what happened so that we can put that in as a requisition and it'll still be, it'll still end up having a purchase order.
Misty? So let's say we do that and let's say it's a Saturday or Friday and something like that happens. And we'll go ahead and do it. If the vendor asks us for APO, will we say, purchasing will call you on Monday?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that?
I believe so.
If it's after hours or weekends?
They usually make you give them a purchase order.
No, we usually say whoever's ordering, like if it's me or Scott or Gina, we'll say per Scott, per Gina.
Okay.
You also have to sign a ticket, you know, when you get that service performed. So usually we write the tractor number down, you know, to track, to track. But a PO number there, you know, in a sense, other than when they invoice you actually at the county, I guess they could put on. But we wouldn't have a track of the PO number.
Yes, sir, you wouldn't have one yet, you're right. You'd probably have to say, our purchasing department's closed at the moment. We'll notify them the next business day and they'll assign you a purchase order number. But the key is to always let purchasing know prior to calling them or spending any funds other than if it's on a, when they're closed, in other words. And then when they're closed, then they can assign them the next business day.
So would we need to write that in the policy? That just make it part of that paragraph where if it's weekend or whatever, then purchasing will assign a PO on the next working day? Because either we could call them or y'all could, I mean, as far as that goes.
I think that once you notify purchasing that you had to do that, then they would, they would get a requisition entered into the system, which then generates a PO and they can just call the vendor with a PO number so they can bill them.
Okay.
Fax or email to them or nothing.
Okay. Have you been over the blanket PO yet?
Not yet, yes, sir.
Because some of these situations is gonna fall under that where we don't, we wouldn't have to worry about it.
Right.
Right, on vendors that you use all the time, since I know y'all are getting stuff from auto parts stores. Sheriff's Office probably uses some things that way too. We can do a blanket purchase order where it encumbers your funds for say six months to a year. I guess you could look back at what you spent in the last year and maybe estimate it that way. And then we would deduct it out of there as it comes out. And it covers all the money, but it'll go back into your budget at the end of the year if you haven't spent it all.
Are you, are you ready to address that now or did I jump ahead of you? Because I have a question. So as far as our budget on blanket purchase orders, and she's talking about the money will come back or go back in. That amount, in other words, we opened up new line items this year for like uniforms instead of coming out of material and supplies. So that amount would be in the beginning, once we give you an estimate on how much we're spending, will be deducted automatically out of our budget going into this specific line item?
Yes, sir. It's called encumbered. And so on your reports, you'll see a column says encumbrances and it will have the amount that you encumbered, so it automatically takes it out of your budget. So you know upfront that that money's obligated. It's only being spent as invoices come in and we actually pay.
And then it moves from the encumbered item to the spent, a month-to-date line item?
On the, Jeffrey, do we have that on our, do we have that software on our computer yet?
The Net Data?
Whatever this is?
Yes.
Okay, because I told the judge in an email that we didn't, so we do have that?
We did.
So go from encumbered to year, month-to-date?
And year-to-date also. Yes, sir.
And as the invoices come in, it will reduce your encumbrance column and increase your expense column, is how it works.
And if for some reason we needed to re-lease it, we just changed the PO? Say if we put ten thousand and then something comes up, say like equipment, maintenance, and we've only spent two thousand, we can come back, change the PO, say to maybe five thousand and release five thousand?
We can't change that, we have to contact purchasing, we have to get approval to do that, it's gonna increase.
Right, or decrease, like if we decrease it and do a new PO. Okay.
Are we saying that all purchases have to be encumbered before they're actually purchased?
Well, what happens is through the system, all purchases have to have a requisition. And then that makes, when they turn it into a requisition, goes to a purchase order and a purchase order goes to an encumbered, it's in your budget.
But that's taken care of up here.
Yes, sir.
And we won't worry about that in the field.
Encumbrances or purchase orders? You still have to do your requisitions?
Okay, but the requisition will automatically encumber it.
Yes, sir.
Once it gets here.
Yes, sir, the departments are only responsible for their requisition. At that point, we do the rest of the work.
How will it work? Black on our Walmart cards? Because we don't have purchase orders for a purchase at Walmart.
I think that would be a blanket purchase order where you would just estimate what you're gonna spend for the year.
So any normal, any normal kindness, okay? Just, just a while ago, hose broke on the Grado.
Yes, sir.
We're all in here, so somebody can answer the phone if you need to. Or would that fall under the blankets of where you just go on and go get it? And do we need to make a note on that and say, hey, this needs to be, like to you or to somebody to, hey, we had to go get this?
Yes, sir, if you have a purchase order, we will send that blanket to the vendor. So they'll know that you already have authority and they'll, they should put that purchase order, purchase order number on each invoice they send to us.
It's gonna be the same purchase order number.
So that's a number that I can write down?
This'll be the same one every time.
This is the purchase order, okay.
Well, this is for all.
Rather than saying it's approved by one of us, we just use that purchase order.
Yes, sir. The key would be to use the vendor you have the blanket PO on. If you have a hose break, you have to use the vendor you have the blanket PO on instead of just using another vendor that you don't already have a purchase order number for.
So the purchase order is not universal to any, to any vendor that you use?
Yes, sir.
What about, I assume, and this would be more along y'all's expertise area. Precinct one, precinct two, and precinct three's gonna all shop at the same place? And we're gonna have one purchase order for all precincts or will there be?
You'll have, each department have their own purchase order. So each road and bridge will have their own purchase order. Say like you want a blanket PO to Mott Supply. So you can go to Mott Supply to get your, get your supplies, your hose, if that's the case. But you can't go to Autozone if you don't have a blanket PO at Autozone. You have to shop when you have a blanket PO.
But you can do a blanket PO.
Injuries in that? Because see, our precinct is long and narrow, okay? If I'm on layered road and break a hose, I can go to Mott's. But if I'm on Village Creek, I can go to Evidale, to Mitchell's, and we're back in business instead of driving all the way across to there.
But you can have a blanket PO at both vendors.
For each place you have a quote.
Or if it, let's say you have a blanket PO at one place and they don't have the hose, but you find it somewhere else and you gotta have it to get back up and running. It would fall under the policy that she was talking about, or the part of the policy she was talking about earlier with unforeseen circumstances.
Right. So you would just have to let those people know, or we would just use the same? How do you list it? We would give y'all the list of the vendors that we use?
Yes, sir.
To fall into that blanket?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's all we would have to provide is the vendors that we actually use on a day basis.
Okay, and if you, if a vendor has a blanket purchase order, then you do not have to have a requisition?
Correct, because it's already been through the process.
Because a lot of times they only go get a fuse or a plug or something like that.
Where you're gonna do that requisition upfront, you know, at the very beginning, once the blanket is established. That's the paperwork you use to establish a blanket PO would be a requisition, you're just estimating the cost.
So, but you don't have to do it for each vendor, you just have a overall encumbrance for, and then all those purchase orders, those blanket purchase orders will come out of that one encumbrance?
Yes, sir. Each blanket PO will have a separate vendor. If you need five blanket POs for five different vendors, then you fill out five requisitions and then Misty turns that into a blanket PO.
And each month you have to estimate what you?
No, it's yearly.
Oh.
It's yearly.
You have to estimate with each vendor.
Yearly, and then if you use up all that, then we'll sign another blanket PO within the year.
We can do less than a year, like I can't say, let's say we roll this out in April. I can't look and say, okay, we're spending X amount of money at Mott's every month. And so only encumber, say fifteen hundred dollars at a time? Can I do that? Versus?
Yes.
I could go in and add and, yeah.
Because I'd rather do it on a thirty day basis, just for my county.
But let's say you get to July and you didn't estimate enough, that can be modified to increase it if it needs to be or if you've overestimated and you get to August and want to decrease it, you can do that as well.
Okay, because I'd rather do either monthly or quarterly instead of yearly.
But it has to be for the individual vendor. You can't just encumber that line for that amount for that year.
No, it's gotta be each individual.
Not for all your vendors, just a PO for one vendor.
Like a while ago, we were talking about uniforms, I think y'all use one uniform company. Let's say you use two different uniform companies, it would be two blanket POs to those uniform companies. And then let's say you get to April or May, June, somewhere in there and you realize you didn't give enough to one or need more to the other or whatever, you can do that. This can be modified to make it be, make it correct to what you need it to be for each vendor.
So we'll have to have, we'll have to keep, I'll have to keep a list with me of every purchase order.
He's gonna be sending y'all a copy. Whoever, whatever vendor gets a blanket PO, Jeffrey will get a copy of it.
And the vendor will have a copy of it all?
Lots of ours is timing. You know, it's like if there's no one there to answer the phone, let's just say your lunch and my lunch might not coincide or if we have an equipment round, we might not do much. But and the order in which you get a call in to get service does matter in thirty to forty-five minutes or an hour. It can change your service time from today to tomorrow afternoon. You know, so you need to be able to get in line, so to speak, because we only have one real road service vendor, you know, and it's out of Beaumont. So when you get somebody in line with them, if they have a guy calling sick and they're shorthanded, well, the sooner you can get up, you know, get with them and get in line, the more productive we can be in the long run. We're not sitting there waiting.
That notification to purchasing doesn't mean you have to wait for her to say proceed, it just means you have to notify her. And you can do that by voicemail, email, or in person.
And if you have a blanket purchase order with that vendor, you won't have to.
You won't even have to call them at all.
You can just get in line and get them rolling.
So we don't have to notify you on the blanket purchase orders?
Correct.
Just like, just like we always do.
Yes, sir.
We just have to put a certain amount of money in for each one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and let's say that we've got a truck that goes down. And we need to have a mechanic to, we'll have a blanket purchase order with, say J and R or how many people works on trucks. We take it there. And then I'm jumping on over to some other, then you have, they have to give you bids, estimates on what their repairs will be?
Typically, that's how we would handle most situations, but I think if you have a piece of equipment broke down that y'all need, I know you don't have multiple maintainers, multiple.
Well, like for instance, Cat works on our motivators, Asco works on our Grados, and like Freightliner's works on my truck. And I wouldn't want to send the Freightliner to another place because we get it serviced at Freightliner, not serviced, but worked on.
Well, now that's not what this policy says. This policy says that the purchasing agent is in charge of all getting prices and comparing the prices and using the cheapest price.
See, we, we follow, Steve, we, a guy there in Lumberton that does our work and he'll shove us ahead.
But what I'm saying is.
He decides in timely fashion, so you're not sitting there because we've got one vendor, Hardin County Diesel. I'd love to use them, but he's flat out. You get in line and I'm two weeks behind and you'll get your equipment properly three to four weeks. Well, if you're using the guy in Lumberton that we use all the time, he'll shove his head and we'll be out three or four days.
So what I'm saying is by the purchasing policy that we're looking at.
It wouldn't, you wouldn't be, I wouldn't have that.
You would not make that decision.
Right.
Misty will make that decision.
That's why.
Now she may base, make it based on your recommendation.
Definitely have to have them put there because, you know, you can't lose a truck for that kind of time.
What I'm saying, like Chris is talking about, if it's a Freightliner, we can't automatically take it to Freightliner.
And some circumstances like, like that, like we just bought that new little Cat, it has to be serviced by them to keep the warranty, you know, and he's got new Freightliners, they're gonna have to be serviced by Freightliner. We can't go to the cheapest place.
And for instance, too, you have a, you have a, it's important in this business to have a paper trail. So if they work on it three or four times, then you can go back and say, well, you didn't fix it. But if you're sending it to two or three different shops, who are you gonna hold accountable if your stuff's not working?
We, we are supposed to use the cheapest, however, if there is a good reason not to or if there's a reason such as the warranty, we just need to document that kind of thing.
Saying everything that y'all are saying makes perfect sense, that's why you wouldn't take it to three or four different places. You would take it to who services that piece of equipment.
Some of that equipment is very specialized and you'll end up being, chasing your tail trying to get it truly fixed if you take it to someone that's not qualified and certified up to date. Your Cat, Asco, and those people, they pretty much, when they tell you they can do something, they can.
Yeah. But it's just like he was saying also, we have, we have a, we have a vendor, a mechanic that works on, I know they work on both mine and Nuthen's equipment, that we use all the time because he does put us, put us first. Now, as far as price, I don't know if he's cheaper or more expensive than the other one, but it's, it's one of those things, a necessity of our job because of our limited amount of equipment.
But I'm saying this person policy now, upfront does not take into consideration necessity of the job and you make the decision where you send it to.
So can we?
The purchasing agent has to make that decision.
Can we add to the policy, the discretion of, or, you know, even if it's equipment, at the discretion of the commissioner with the guidance of purchasing and auditing? And based on historical experience, like, you know, if, you know, obviously Asco's gonna service a Grado because no one else knows how. So that would be historical, at our discretion, but with y'all's guidance. I don't know if we need to spell that out in the policy?
Well, unless it's, I don't wanna say an emergency situation, but unless you do not have the time for Misty to make three calls, then she really does need to make those three calls and then you can document why you want to choose the vendor you want to choose. And then we're fine. It's just documentation. But it, Misty really needs to try to get those three price quotes at all times when possible.
I got, going back on that too. With the, and you have these specialized services, you may only have one vendor even in this area that does that. How are you gonna, you know, I know, I know when we did some, when we had to do it for FEMA, she had to call like Dallas and San Antonio to get prices. These people aren't coming here and they'll give you absurd prices even, they're, it's almost ridiculous to do that when you have only one person in this area that does that particular part of the job.
We still need to do that. Will it still be your, your?
If it's actually on your blanket requisition, how do you want us to come into detail? Because obviously if we're gonna say, hey, we want, we want five thousand or blanket requisition to provide these auto parts, we're not gonna know at the first of the year what all that's gonna involve. So how do you want us to, give us some guidance on what you want in the blanks when we're doing a blanket, when we don't know what the items are gonna be?
Okay. You're not gonna know all those. Well, what you need to know, the line item, and you can have multiple line items, you could allot a thousand dollars to one line item, then two thousand dollars to another line item.
You're talking about the line item on the, in the budget?
Yes.
I'm talking about the quantity units in the description.
You can have to put that in, you can say various automotive supplies.
Miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous, or something like that.
Okay.
There are certain required fields on there, it will automatically fill the date. You have to put who the requestor is, the email, the department, you don't have to put a vendor. We, you do have to tell us if it's a grant purchase, we handle this a little bit differently. And so. And, um, so there won't be a quantity, you have to do the, I believe, the account code and a part number and description, which you probably won't have a part number, I'm not sure if that one's.
You don't have to have a part number.
You don't have to, cause y'all don't always know part number. Um, and then scroll down, Erica, if you can. Um, there will be a place, we got empty box at the bottom, we're still kinda working on this, it's gonna be a place of notes where you can type in, um, I think it's up to like two hundred and fifty characters. But when you go to calculate and submit, when you go to submit it at the bottom, if there's anything that hasn't been filled out that's required, it won't let you submit it, and you'll have to go back and check that.
I've heard that you might wanna put blanket PO on, right, to tell if it's gonna be a blanket.
All right, so. Would we put on the blanket PO, like on miscellaneous, and then put, like, say if it's maintenance, parts and labor, cause you're gonna be billed for both, you're gonna be billed for parts, you're gonna be billed for labor?
Misty, what about contract services, like right now, when I get a bill from our psychiatrist, I just do a, uh, check request form, do I need to have a blanket PO for his services?
Um, yes, I believe so. Can you look at last year's and kind of estimate?
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm an issue, I just need to know if I did need to have one. Same, I guess same thing for like substance abuse counselors and things like that, and you get a blanket PO for all of those.
Well, you guys will be responsible for looking up EPLS on our grants?
Yes, on our grants.
So we want us to do that for the vendors, you'll still write that.
Okay. On the blanket PO, our guys might go to Mott's and buy something for the equipment, so it comes under equipment, uh, account. But then they might go and get, you know, some materials, okay, that comes under materials, but when they go, will it just be under one account number, or will, there'll be a, um, material and equipment under that?
Yeah, if there's two, if you, if you know you're gonna spend money on two line items at the same place, or three line items at the same place, you would list those there and estimate how much out of each line item.
That's strictly just. Both of them line items on the same requisition?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's just for y'all to be able to go in and try to find the cheapest vendor for us to purchase that from? Uh, he was talking blanket, correct? Blanket, if, if we use that PO, we should be able to buy whatever we need from that store.
Correct. Correct. Those are our local vendors that, they keep y'all going, I understand that.
When does this go into effect?
January twenty eighteen.
This is why we're having a workshop, cause I want, I need to hear y'all's questions to, to, and, reset it.
So as of now, just keep going with the check request forms?
Yeah, none of that changes yet. Right, this is just a workshop to discuss this, and, uh, any tweaks that need to be made to the policy, we'll do that, send it out to everybody, and then when, uh, the consensus of the court is that it's ready to come to court to be approved, and we'll.
And our reoccurring bills, like Verizon, we don't need to, we just need to handle those like a check request form, we don't need a blanket PO for Verizon, do we? We need to do a blank, we needed, really.
Yeah, and we're also working on consolidating those, I think we have thirty-two different Verizon accounts right now, and we're gonna try to get those down to about five.
So this is, this is, like, for just every bill that I get in, I need to do a purchase requisition for every?
Before, before the purchase is made, right.
Zerox copies sends me bill every month.
We'll do a blanket PO for those, yes, sir.
In other words, your workload's going down a mile or two.
Whole department for the blanket.
That's what I'm saying, y'all might have to hire more people.
I might have twenty or twenty-five more people.
You might have people that more than all of the officers, officers.
So, so basically, we're looking at maybe a whole budget being, other than payroll, being encumbered, is what you're looking at then. So at the beginning of the year, we're gonna encumber basically our whole operating budget.
That's the goal, so they can see what you have left.
But, and we won't know until the end of the year. At the end of the year, let's say we get down to September fifteenth, when will that money, will y'all automatically put that money in, back that's not encumbered, or when, will it be, will it be September thirtieth, when that money goes back in, or how will that work? I mean.
Well, I would think if he would see that he wasn't gonna use anything else out of there, he could come to us and see what was left, and then we could.
So I can just, I can change it at any time, yeah.
So would you have an encumbered, co- encumbrance line item on the, on our, on our deal? Will we, will we have another line item, where we'll have to, if, we'll either have to put money in or take money out, or if we're gonna have to move it, then we'll have to come to the commissioner's court to move money in and out, right?
No.
Mm-mm.
No.
No?
It's within your budget.
Okay.
I would think that at any point, you could come in, at any point, and kill that PO, and say, I'm through, I'm not gonna spend, that money's gonna roll back into that line item, and then you can start over again, whether you do it thirty days into the budget, or eight months into the budget. At any point, you can kill the PO and start over.
If we leave a PO around that time, we'll be changing it around.
It'll move from encumbered over to, to purchase, and the rest balance gonna back into that item, yeah.
Okay, Misty, that's, okay, competitive bid items, like materials. Okay, we, of course, makes the decision which, who is, is awarded to, and then we usually do a second in case the first one doesn't have it. Okay, then, let's say on, on materials, we would go in and we'd encumbered with, uh, trendy materials for ten thousand dollars for that month. Now, each time they get ready to go and get a truckload of materials, they don't have to do anything?
But do you get a ticket from your, when your, uh, vendor lets you know that you did that, they just need to put that PO number on that ticket?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they would have a PO, a blanket PO.
So. Yes, sir.
Because they, they got the bid.
Would, would the individual vendors actually keep a copy of the PO themselves, so they would know for each precinct, because like at Mott's, you got two or three precincts doing bid?
Right, we will send them one, yes, sir.
Okay. So that's not something I would have to give my guys if they were going to pick up something?
You, you might wanna tell them the purchase order, because it depends on who, who's checking out.
It'd be easy if I, if, if you were, if, the only road and bridge precinct going there, but if there's four going to the same vendor, it would be a good idea to have that PO number handy to give them, make sure they build the right precinct.
They'll do it, they'll do it once by mistake, or.
And if you'd like to, you can give my guys your PO.
Well, this is, this affects like advanced travel, like when we're sending people to train in, uh, hotel purchases, things like that.
Travel policy is already, is separate.
Okay, Misty, back to the materials. We do an estimate, so it can be encumbered for two vendors on limestone. Now, as we go through the, through the month, we get it from one, and maybe get it from another one. And we've got an amount encumbered with one, an amount encumbered with another. Okay, when one of them reaches the encumbered amount, but the other one hasn't, do we have to keep up with that on a daily basis and notify y'all, or will y'all notify us? Or when we run out of the encumbered on one, will you jump over to the other one?
I'll be able to tell when I get the invoice to go to pay it, if you don't have any in it, and then I'll call you and see how much you wanna, would you like, put, add to it.
Add to it.
I would think that's something we'd work together on between purchasing and the department heads.
So will all the invoices now come to y'all?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Can I request something? And then, and some departments may already have it, but if, if each department head or, or financial person for that office had access, not maybe to input or, or change, but, look at, at data, you can just pull it up and see that, on a daily basis.
You, you, if you don't have that already, I sent out an email last Wednesday asking to let me know, and I'd get you on the list to get it, but every department has access to that.
That'd be great. So we can check that on a daily basis then, when it's.
Yes, sir.
Good question. Um, when you do the blanket, will we still have to do, like, our moving deals, like Horizons or ours, will we still have to do a purchase order each month for those deals? Or if y'all have a blanket, will we just?
Blanket would be for the year, those are typically about the same amount every month, so the blanket would be for the whole year.
So are we?
You just send the bill directly to us.
So we're giving them a more check request forms for those deals?
Just write the PO number on it and send it to purchasing.
It's like, right, per? So, I'm not gonna go straight to you, will they make them up to us in the back, or we all just keep?
We're actually working with Horizon to consolidate, and save us some money on the bills, um, so, like, the great departments will be separated, then all the general ones are supposed to be on the line with the bill, and then the rest of them will be on one bill, so, uh, we're hoping that those are gonna start just coming as small gray like.
Are you needing copies of invoices, will you need any of that?
No, I mean, it would actually save me a lot of work, so I'll have to do those every single night, but we have the blanket, that will be a big relief.
So y'all, like, obviously, invoices and?
But we'll be vouching after, like, we.
We don't keep it out.
No, if you need copies of invoices, like, I have you, Jared might need, I don't know if he'll need any, I can make them, and I'll put them in the, oh, I can write, I know pretty much he'll need them.
I will need them, but this, um, like, whenever I need this year.
Invoices be directed to purchasing.
Um, I will charge the customers for that, so I get reimbursed for that, so.
They can do.
So we can just tell.
Okay.
PO number.
PO number, the, the address right here, and they just don't send.
So then we won't enter anything into our.
If we have a blanket with a particular vendor, and it's one that we like to choose because of their ability to get us back on the road, do you still have to, uh, they have to call you or check with you and get, w- once they figure out, let's say, what's wrong, let's say we're replacing a clutch? All right. Well, they have to, even though they're in a, under a blanket with us, will they still have to get in touch with you, or you with them, to get a, to go out and look and see who's cheaper than them? I mean, would they have to sit and wait until you got that done before they could work, or if they're in the blanket, can we go ahead and use it till our money's gone?
If, if there's a blanket, you would use it till the money's gone.
Okay, no questions, then we don't have to, we don't have to worry with calling you or sending anything.
You get the other two quotes, in other words, is what you're saying.
Right, to get the other two quotes. That's what I wanted, regardless, that's what we do on a daily basis, you know?
Yeah, we're getting around to it.
Yeah.
Or, y'all already done that, you're sending them to them.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter, we might, could find it cheaper somewhere else, that's why we found out that it's a quote.
Right, that's why, no, because then you're gonna be hung up, you could be hung up for a day.
So what we could do, get you a list of our vendors and what we use them for, once you get that, then you gonna do your business and, or whatever you want to.
Yeah, call them, let them know.
Well, the big problem, the road and bridge.
Cause there's gonna be various things wrong with it. That's a good question, um.
Well, then, we'll be, we'll be, we'll find out labor rates on the different vendors.
For instance, we, for instance, we've used a vendor in, in Beaumont, who's absolutely unreliable. And so, we will have to truck, sometimes a tractor, to Houston where we bought it, because the service is dependable. We've had a tractor down like four weeks with Beaumont trying to work on it, and.
They just put that in the notes on the requisition, put something like that on there for you to know that that, that's who, that is the vendor they need to send it to?
Yeah, because I'm, I prefer Beaumont, but they don't have the capable people, and.
Do we just have a preferred vendor list?
Because if, if you get a month behind on mowing, you, you cannot make that up.
But isn't a blanket purchase order used for reoccurring items, and not, uh, like, a major repair or a breakdown? It shouldn't not follow the procedures of getting the price quotes, and a blanket PO is more for, like, parts and supplies, like, that you need.
That's what I would say.
Say it again.
A blanket PO is more for reoccurring items, and if you have a repair on a piece of equipment, unless it's unforeseen circumstances that you can wait, then I would say that that would fall under, where Misty needs to be notifying at the price quotes. I think your blanket POs are more for reoccurring everyday expenses, and then, uh, for other kinds of items.
But again, if it can be done, if it can be done cheaper in Beaumont, but faster in Houston, then that's what's gonna happen, it's gonna get, uh, approved to go to Houston.
It just needs to be gotten there.
Cause just, cause it's cheaper in Beaumont, it's costing you more to wait an extra three or four weeks.
Yeah.
So then basically, in repairs, you wouldn't even have blanket POs at any shop like that again, because everything is, in our, in our situation, everything is a noun. Okay, now, granted, there's times that you can see something that is faltering, and you can say, okay, next week, we wanna try and send this in to get it fixed, that's something that wouldn't be an issue. But if you're in the middle of a job, and the, the slave owner goes out on the, the thing, we can run it right there to R and L, they'll put it in while you're standing and wait, and get back on.
That's still what's gonna happen, I'll deal with them on that later.
Bless you.
Okay.
We gonna, we gonna operate.
All right.
We're not, we're not trying to keep you from.
No, and, and I understand that, I'm just trying to keep us stupid, cause we wanna be productive too, you know?
Yes, sir.
And not be able to bother y'all, and we just wanna make sure that we're all still moving, and I'm, you know, I want you to keep a right frame of mind, so that I don't, that's all.
That's a unforeseen circumstances where you don't have time to wait, so as you're, before you call the repair person, call Misty and notify her that you've got a repair person you need on your job ASAP.
Okay.
And again, you don't have to wait, if she, if you don't get her, or, 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 you just leave a message, and then you've made your notification.
Right, okay.
But you know, if this equipment's broke down, and you don't need it for another week, then, then go through Misty and, right.
Right, that's not an issue, right.
Do you wanna, um, I'm just trying to think when I talked about, I'm trying to think.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Can you just?
Um, one thing I did wanna say is the stock supplies that we keep in purchasing, paper pens, note, um, notebooks, paper clips, all the stuff that's in there, that's not affected by this. We do that, and we'll, we're gonna keep those, when y'all come to get that stuff, you don't have to fill out anything, you know, it's like, it's a home, it's like.
Do we have, like, paper towels, is that something I just call it, y'all, like, I normally do, it's like, hey, Misty, I need some towels or, or do I need to do a, a requisition?
I don't know, they're, we, it's big.
What about this, like, our aim and stuff?
Another thing is, anything that an employee or elected official might purchase, and expect ream, they expect reimbursement for, um, this is not, does not include travel, cause you already have a policy on travel, they would need to be, so they're purchasing with requisition card, so. I'm trying to think of an example without the, um.
Well, it's, when you use a credit card, cause the county doesn't have a credit card, you have to purchase something using your credit card, that's the only way the vendor will make the purchase, is with a credit card. We don't have one, so if employee uses their credit card, they still need to do the, like they were ordering from any other vendor. But it's, uh, under the vendor, the requisition would be the employee's name, but before they actually make that purchase with that credit card, you have to go through the requisition system with Misty, and your name would be the vendor name, cause you're gonna get reimbursed. That's me.
Now, on training, though, that, it just, nothing changes there, if somebody, uh, if somebody's unable to, uh, pay for their lodging and what have you upfront, the county will still front that money, and then they turn in a, uh, expense report at the end, with any leftover money, or if they didn't get enough, then they would, uh, ask for reimbursement. Or vice versa, if you go and, and, uh, you pay for your travel and lodging and your tuition, then you just ask for reimbursement, just like we do now, right?
Right.
That doesn't change. Because that's not, and the reason is, that's not actually a purchase, that's a reimbursement for training, is that what the, okay.
That's all I really had in my notes to talk about, is there, do y'all have any other questions or anything?
What about our, uh, you know, we have our gas card for the band, is that all, this, we just do the blanket PO with the same, same thing as the county card?
I think that's all we'll hang around. And you'll estimate it, but, you know, if you get close to the end and.
Well, we, we kinda do that anyway already, so it's, uh, we just still turn the receipt, I mean, nothing changes really, basically, other than just s- sending it over with a blanket PO at the beginning of the year.
So, the Road and Bridge needs to get you a list of vendors that we need blanket POs on, and, and so doing, we need to keep in mind that this is only for everyday operations and not emergencies. All right. And then, that would be the only thing that's encumbered, is on blanket POs, nothing else is.
Well, whenever you send us a requisition for anything else.
It's gonna come out of whatever line item we put on requisition, okay.
But it will be encumbered.
Can I take over as soon as?
Yes.
I mean, that's what I'm.
Oh, uh, she answered it, uh, that he told her he'd be a PO too, you know, guess we can just go to the office.
Yeah, just.
We can request when we get it.
Just put it here, whatever aim it, you just put it.
So we don't really have to do a blanket.
Yeah, this one. She did say, yeah, I showed him, drop down, cause you have this, yeah.
Cause he still has to add that case, that time.
You have to check that, you have to check it in.
Angelo and, uh, Misty, you can do blanket POs now, right? You, you can, they can be done now, right?
Yes, we can.
So I'm thinking maybe the first thing we need to do is let's get this form finalized, and get it out to everybody, and let them start requesting their blanket POs, and let's get those in place before we go a whole lot further. Do y'all agree? Does everybody else kind of agree with that as well?
So we're implementing this now?
You can do blanket POs now.
Like Casey, Casey, he tends to be a simple person, I have blankets for each. Like Casey, Casey, he sends me his invoices every month, I have blankets for each, each department and I just go in and.
Okay, so are y'all asking us to do it or requiring us to do it?
Oh, I don't know, you talk to them.
I would just say that they're being, everybody's being asked to go ahead and get those in place before the policy is adopted, but then that, that's already for you.
So, Angela, and we don't have to.
Do we do the blanket POs? You might take some, you know, materials or supplies, or you might take something out of maintenance, you know, or whatever. We're gonna, we'd take that money to encumbered out of those line items?
I wanna tell you too, oh, can you?
Yes. Okay, alright, so if we, say we, we have, like, uh, more money than. Where do we take the money from, put back in, if we've already used that money?
We have, we have been lusting, man, this is, I'm telling you, we've got all stuff to play with.
Once you have recurring, like, uh, you know, AutoZone or Rallycom constantly, you know.
Do we need to discuss anything more before we adjourn? I wanna make sure, uh, remind everybody in case you didn't get the email, Candace is gonna go over the net data with anybody that has any questions about that. She's gonna give a brief presentation on net data, so if you wanna stay for that, you can. Is there anything else we need to discuss before we adjourn?
We are just discussing, so we're gonna, right, and it's all, sure, it's all vehicles.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, I'm just, I would, my answer, I'm just saying so everybody can hear, um, was that we could get three quotes and then I'll recommend whichever one they're already using some now, so, um, then they could do a blanket for those.
Yeah, I would think so. Cause I know some of your guys, uh, live in the Sealsby area, so they go to a Sealsby vendor, some live in, uh, Coons area, so they go to a Coons vendor.
But we're supposed to be going with the cheapest vendor, so at some point we need to establish.
There again, it's, it's not cheaper if the guy has to drive from Sealsby to Batson to get his oil changed, I mean, uh, or, or vice versa, well, that's true. But, so, I, I would say that we would, I mean, there's not that big of a difference between, uh, one vendor in Sealsby to one vendor in Coon's or Lumberton, so I would think that it doesn't make sense to have somebody drive thirty miles to go get their oil changed or anything like that, in my opinion. Unless it's a big difference, if it's, it's a big difference, then it doesn't make sense.
So it's a judgment call, roots department.
Yeah, most of them Sealsby, Lumberton, now, there is a big difference on, on the, uh, on the oil changes on some of the vehicles, but y'all know that and so you would just put that on your acquisition, here, we're using this vendor and here's why and it would be the cheapest price anyway, so. Any other questions before we adjourn?
I'm gonna adjourn.
Sorry, I have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Feltler, adjourned.
Well, since I'm sitting here and I get to vote.
You don't get to vote, no. Now, you don't have to leave, uh, Candace is gonna stick around and talk about net data, anybody that wants to, uh, talk to her about that and I've got a list of people that need that, if, if I don't have your name on the list, let me know. You or her or both, okay, we'll put, uh, Jared on the list.
Yes, you were gonna talk to me about, uh, then you talked to us about it.
How you get it?
I have. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna retain Lumberton, Duncan, so, yeah, that's all I have, I'll have, uh, five.
He said something. Do we have that, that he's wanting to do a small presentation and get a consensus from us before we go too much further? We ended up telling him, uh, last night, I think. Might ask Melanie to make sure, but I think, and she would know as well, the precinct, does Melanie have that on her computer?
But she did so many, it's more than I didn't get, um, because she took it all on, but from what I understand, Casey came and installed it, he did it because y'all have to tend it to the client outside in order to connect.
I have no idea what you're saying, okay. Y'all will figure it out, y'all will have to hire people.
Yeah.